Meeting of the Select Board for May 24th to 2021. Call to order at 6:39. Please rise and some of you can salute the flag.
I have allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence as we honor our women and men of the military, both past and present, and also to honor our healthcare and first responders for the outstanding work that they performed during this pandemic. Thank you.
Please be seated. First appointment we have at 6:30, right on time. Oxford Creamery for a one-day event.
I have a question.
Frank?
Yeah, why do we still call out Oxford Creamery when they don't own it anymore?
It's maybe the way the license came in.
Shouldn't that be changed at some point, though? It's, I mean, the town owns it now. It's the bucket and, you know.
I think we have to talk to the Park Department for that. Change the name to the Bucket.
Okay.
The Bucket.
The Bucket. Patent pending. Trademark that means, too.
Trademark, yes, sure.
Do we have any paperwork on this, or is this?
No. So this was brought in Friday.
Okay.
So what time is it? There's no time here or anything.
Yeah, hold on one second. I'm in a wrong folder. I agree with you, Stan. There's no information at all.
There's nothing.
One-day event, when and where and what time?
Believe, let's see here.
Somebody choosing.
They were doing a one-day private event.
Really?
And then contacted the office. Sorry, I'm gonna find it. Hold on.
Don't feel like you're being challenged here, Sean.
Sorry, let's see.
Where you need the Jeopardy thing coming.
Enough of that.
This is an event that Lara Stone's involved with. Sean, I think the message I have from Melanie is that you asked her to put it on the agenda. I think you just wanted to promote it, but I could be wrong. It's a private event, so it's not for the public.
Okay.
I think I can help you out.
David?
There was some confusion about getting a license, and as far as I know, because it's a private event, the license has been given, and this is not an issue that requires our voting or our input. I think it was an issue, and the issue has been solved by the Board of Health.
Okay, all right. Done. All right, next item on the agenda is the one-day beer and wine license for the Dartmouth Cultural Center, 404 Elm Street for May 28th. It's pending police approval. I know we have here Joe La from the Council Cultural Center. Joe?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the event for, and what?
It's for Friday night, the 28th, for an opening for a solo artist show, Karen Melanson. She's a pastelist. And it's for two hours, five to seven.
Five to seven. We didn't have that on here, so.
All right, does the, do we have the police approval on that yet?
Not yet, but they will have it.
Okay. All right, so if we do anything, it'll be, a motion will be pending police approval. So do I have a motion?
Motion to allow the one-day event pending police approval.
I apologize. Police have approved it.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the event.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Gracie. On the motion, any questions? Okay, roll call, vote. Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Haron? Mr. Haron, unmute yourself, please.
First time he's heard that.
Yes. Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. All right, congratulations, Ms. La. Have fun.
Thanks, Joe.
Good luck.
Have a great night, guys.
You too now. All right, next item, that concludes our appointments. Next is new business. First item on the agenda is the Russell's Mills Land Conservation Restriction. And with us tonight, we have the most distinguishable Dexter Mead of the DNRT.
Good evening, everyone. This is a project that DNRT has been working on with the Conservation Commission for about a year now. And while we're not, as you can see, we're not holding the conservation restriction, the Conservation Commission is... I've, Bart Garrett has just asked me to present it tonight because we're, you know, it's sort of our, you know, our project. And basically, what's happening is that the town is purchasing a conservation restriction on this 24-acre property just outside of Russell's Mills Village. Money is coming from a land grant from CPC and also from private donations to DNRT. So the Conservation Commission will be purchasing this conservation restriction from the Fentraces, who own the land now. And then immediately afterwards, DNRT will be buying the fee title in the property from the Fentraces. So DNRT will own the property. Conservation Commission will hold the conservation restriction on it. It's very similar to many other projects we've done in the past where we've bought a property with the Conservation Commission holding a CR. It's just a little, the steps are just a little bit different in this particular case. But it's a wonderful project. It's 24 acres. That includes about 18 acres of woodlands that DNRT will put trails in, publicly accessible trails. It's right across the street. Excuse me, right across Fisher Road from Destruction Brook. So we can create a trail connection from Destruction Brook to this property. The property also has six acres of agricultural fields that we intend to keep in agricultural use. And they're being used actually this year by by Tucker Banley and his wife to grow dahlias, which is a sort of a new business of theirs. And they live on the farm just to the south of it, on Alderbrook Farm. So it's sort of a combination, you know, public access on one end of the property and agricultural preservation on the other end. And it's a great project, and we're, you know, DNRT has raised over $100,000 in private money to support this project, and we're just asking you to to sign, you know, to approve and sign this conservation restriction. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Yep. Any questions from the board? Mr. Tattlebaum?
One quick question. Dexter, thanks for all the work you do. The beginning of this agreement talks about the arrangement the Fentraces would have with the conservation, but is that eliminated now, once you make that purchase?
Yeah, we would basically take the place of the Fentraces in the, I mean, the conservation restriction that the Fentraces will sign is for them and anybody that they sell the property to. So we would, it would apply to us, and if we ever sold the property, it would apply to whoever we sell it to and so on.
So the Fentraces essentially are eliminated once the purchase is made by DNRT?
Yeah, they're immediately eliminated.
Okay. Thanks. I was a little confused. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gracie, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. On the motion, any questions? Roll call. Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Haron?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor.
You want to vote to have me stamp it with your signatures?
Oh, I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Gracie, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Haron. On the motion. Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Haron?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Okay, all set.
Thanks.
Go, Dexter.
You guys really have these Zoom meetings down to a science now. I'm very impressed.
Some of us do.
Thank you very much and have a good evening.
You too, Greg.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is the historic preservation restoration request for the CPC Town Pound. We have a letter from Buddy Baker Smith. On this, we also have an email from James O'Day on this. Mr. O'Day wanted to appear before the board tonight. I don't see him here. I think Buddy was also on the list to appear, but I don't see him here. So in essence, this basically is the historic preservation restriction in the Town Pound. Now, my understanding is this, that it's a restriction, but it's still maintained by the Select Board, and it's not... The land itself, the Town Pound, is not being turned over to the Park Department. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it's looking for the Park Department to maintain the landscaping of the Town Pound. So I think Mr. O'Day, and reading Mr. O'Day's letter, and which, by the way, if you can put that email and whatever his letter make a part of tonight's record. I believe he said that if it became park, then it would be, if it was under the jurisdiction of the Park Department, it would then become a historical park, and then would need, any type of changes would have to be done through the legislature. So being that it's still under the purview of the Select Board, we, this is just a restriction, and it's, his concerns about the historical park aspect of it is not in play, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right, that's...
Also, this is just, so the Select Board's not voting to place the preservation restriction on the property tonight. It's only voting to move forward to have the property appraised and put all the paperwork together so the board can vote on the preservation restriction.
Okay. All right. Okay, now, I guess the, I guess the question, not so much the question, I guess the historical significance of the Town Pound. It's not just a place where stray dogs were always were. That there is a historical significance to this from the colonial times and that the Historical Commission has, is in favor of this, and I know they had some discussions in their meetings about the Town Pound, specifically also having to do with the gate. I remember the gate-gate, whatever you want to call it, the discussions regarding the gates was also significant in the Historical Commission. So what's the board, what would the board like to do with this?
I'm confused. Why aren't the parties supposed to be here? Are we capable of making the decision based on not having the parties here?
Well, I think, I think the letter by Buddy Baker Smith, basically asking to start the process, this is starting of the process. So I'm assuming this is going to come back to us anyway.
So we just need to make, have a vote to move forward?
To initiate the process, because it says it right here. Since the property is owned by the town, the Select Board would need to initiate the process to place a preservation restriction on the property. So by us voting tonight to start this process, the process can begin, and then it would still have to end up coming back to us to approve or disapprove the restriction.
Town meeting's not involved?
I don't believe so.
Not at this point. But Mr. O'Day is on the YouTube channel and says...
Okay, I see a chat thing here.
He doesn't know how to get in.
I can try to send him the link to the meeting.
I personally would like to hear what he's got to say.
Me too.
Well, I read what he had to say.
Yeah, we all did.
Why, why does this not have to go to town meeting? It's community preservation funds approval involved?
They've already approved it.
This panel has?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Jim, just a reminder, we haven't done the town warrant yet. I don't know if you want to fit that in.
We'll get, we'll slip this in right after this discussion.
You want to, you want to take some other things up while we're waiting?
I just sent him the link.
No, because right now, because we have a report from Amy on the opening, the memorial parade update from Matthew, and then we got two other items that were put in on the agenda by the chair.
Woo.
Woo.
Our chair?
Yes, our chair. And not the one I'm sitting on.
As long as you're not off your rocker.
No. That's right. While we're waiting for Mr. O'Day to come in, why don't we do the, need a motion to to approve the warrant for this week and to authorize Mr. McInnes to use our stamp to sign the warrant. Do I have a motion?
So vote.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gracie, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. On the motion, Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Haron?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Okay, there's Mr. O'Day. Mr. O'Day, if you can unmute yourself, please. Mr. O'Day, can you hear me? Shake your head if you can hear me. All right, maybe he's clicking in.
Oh, he's already on.
Right, I see him. DCTV, ask him to unmute himself, please. There he is.
Yes, hi.
Okay, Mr. O'Day, okay, we're in the process of discussion, discussing the Town Pound.
Yes.
I just wanted to, I was, I was trying to clarify this with Mr. McInnes. One of the things I was concerned about was what you had brought up regarding the park, historic park restrictions. My understanding, and Mr. McInnes confirmed this, that even though this restriction, if this restriction does go through, the jurisdiction of the Town Pound remains with the Select Board and does not be, and is not transferred to the Park Department. So it becomes, it becomes with... Here, okay.
Jamie has the YouTube feed going also at the same time. He's got to shut that off on his laptop.
Okay, Mr. O'Day, if you could shut off the YouTube feed and just stay with us on this, it'd be great.
He muted himself again.
Yeah.
Yes, hi, good evening. Yeah, I didn't realize the YouTube was still on. It was off to the side.
That's okay. We heard it.
I know, so did I. It was a bit maddening. Also, Joni Swift is in the wings wanting to participate too, Sean, but like me, she thought YouTube was the way to join. So she's probably listening, but I don't know if she'll, I was trying to send her the Zoom link that you just sent me. She has some testimony too she wants to add. Would you bear with me a minute while I forward your email to me, to her? Unless you have...
And, and who is Ms. Smith, by the way?
Joni Swift is a resident of Russell's Mills Village and a concerned citizen who's been working with me regarding the meadow in the Town Pound and is interested also in the preservation, proposed preservation restriction.
Okay.
The long-term resident of Dartmouth and the village.
Okay. In the meantime, as you're sending her the information, maybe you can speak to your email.
Well, I'd like to. I can't do both things at once. I need to focus on getting her taken care of, if you don't mind, first. Just, that's just the way it is. I've got the phone. I've got the laptop and trying to manage it all. And if I don't do it properly, I'll just sacrifice that. I know she is listening, so. Anyway, why don't we forego that? Because it seems to be a bit of time. It's a waste of time. So I have some prepared testimony for you, just about three minutes, giving an overview of how I feel about things. But Chair, I just did want to mention specifically to you, and it seems to be a point that a lot of people in the community are missing. and that is that the Town Pound is within a local historic district. So belts and suspenders, as I mentioned in my email, it has protections in place, alright? So it's not out there unprotected, and this is why I have some reservations about the preservation restriction. So let me just quickly read to you what I prepared, and, and that we should make a quick work of that, so. So, but, but thank you, thanks Chair, uh, for recognizing me, and I'm submitting my oral and written testimony by way of tonight's testimony and the memo that I sent to you. And, you know, tonight I'm speaking in my capacity as a private citizen, so my views are my own. And while I am a preservation planner with thirty-three years of professional experience and a member of the Dartmouth Historical Commission, I'm not speaking for the Dartmouth Historical Commission tonight. And as I've stated before, and as you know, I do not support the preservation restriction for the pound. And my opinion is based on the following facts. One, the pound is a historic resource within the Russell's Mills Village Local Forty-C Historic District whose historic integrity is overseen by the local Historic District Commission. Secondly, if added to the Parks Department portfolio, as has been discussed for years, any change or alteration of this historic site or parkland would require an act of state legislature. There's not a remote chance that this protected historic site can be threatened. Highly improbable that it could be turned into a skateboard park or some other inappropriate use as someone on our Historic District Commission recently said. Local Historic Districts provide ample protection. The Massachusetts Historical Commission states, one, quote, "Local Historic Districts are the strongest form of protection that can be given to historic properties," close quote. Secondly, Historic Districts, quote, "provide a regulatory review process," close quote, "for historic resources within its boundary." Thirdly, and the law gives, quote, "assurances that the historic built environment will be there for future generations," close quote. And lastly, further cementing its permanence and legitimacy, the local Historic District is registered with the Bristol County Registry of Deeds Southern District. The Historic District runs with the land. Excuse me. These protections are fixed. They are state law and part of local ordinance. Also informing my position are past DHC positions. Chair Judith Lund has signaled that the, that transferring the pound to the Parks Department is a panacea for protection. Since two thousand sixteen through two thousand nineteen, she's made comments to that effect, and those comments are detailed in the memo that I sent you all, so I won't go through each of those. But there are four entries in which she's had comment and opinion on that. So I'll just, just sort of summarize by saying, our local Historic District Commission works. It performs its duties. Recent examples include, one, the Russell's Extrem House, built seventeen oh four for review of a significant addition added. Two, the Village Firehouse, built around eighteen eighty. A review of significant interior and exterior rehabilitation work. And three, the Fintris property, which was mentioned earlier with Dexter Mead, built seventeen forty um, for a review of proposed roofing materials. In conclusion, the preservation restriction is not the only way to prevent any alterations of the pound in the future. Protection is currently in place. The local Forty-C Historic District assures that protection. And that's it. That concludes my testimony. I think that, to recap everything, belts and suspenders, protection is in place. The preservation restriction is not necessary, and I have further questions about um, how, uh, what the cost of the preservation restriction is. Uh, that's come up recently, and we don't have a figure to that. So it's all very concerning, especially if it's not truly necessary. We don't need to spend the taxpayers' money uh, any further on something if it's already taken care of. And that's all my comments for tonight. So that concludes my testimony. Thank you for entering into the record, and I submit respectfully and with thanks.
Thank you. Um, one of the questions that I had with Mr. McInnes was that this restriction is not going to turn the land over to the Park Department, that it remains with the town itself. Um, so I'm, I was a little concerned about that. Especially going forward and, and getting that type of getting that type of permission to change in the future by going to the legislature and whatnot. My understanding, also, the town cannot hold its own restriction. Am I correct?
Preservation restriction?
Yes.
Uh, maybe I'm not following you, so this
The town currently owns that property, correct? The Town Pound?
Correct.
Okay, so the town could put its own historic, his own restriction on it, correct, and still maintain?
I'm not, I'm, I can't, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I'd have to ask counsel.
Yeah, alright, because that's one of the things, because I, because right now, um, town meeting had voted, um, sums of money to, uh, to clear it, to clear the property up and clean it up. Um, what we're asking, I guess, in, besides the restriction, is also asking the Park Department to maintain the property by maintaining the landscaping, uh, while the town still, so i- if the town has the restriction and owns the property, then there is no cost related to this. Am I correct? It's only a related cost is if we look to initiate, um, to have somebody hold the restriction, which means that they would also hold the, uh, the deed.
And the preservation restriction would be in perpetuity, so the, the property would, would never be developed in any way or improved.
I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to find out if the town can hold the restrictions themselves. You know, that, I mean, as if that's the case, then, then everybody's to the good, and the Park, the Park Department can continue to, you know, they can continue to maintain it, and nobody has to worry about anybody getting it other than the town. Frank?
Yeah, I, I, I thought I was confused before. It's getting more confusing. Uh, I, I would suggest that we, and I would make an emotion if you choose, that we hold off on this, get a legal opinion, and make sure we're not doing something that doesn't need to be done, as Mr. O'Day has said. Uh, if, if, if the result is going to be the same, why spend the money? I agree completely with that.
Right. Okay.
I'll second Frank's motion.
I'm sorry, Mr. Haron?
I said I'd second Frank's motion.
Okay, that's if that's a motion, so we'll, we'll hold off on it. Mr. Talabom?
Uh, has, has the Town Council made any kind of judgment or ruling on this issue up till now?
Um, they haven't, because the, the, the request from CPC was just to have the board start the process of the preservation restriction, so to get the property appraised.
So, so, so Frank is saying we should do the, some legal work first?
Yes.
And then we can move on, as opposed to Buddy saying we can rule afterwards?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not sure why Buddy's not on, but we'll make sure that, uh, the next meeting, that Buddy Baker Smith and Anthony Savistano are both at the meeting, or Brian Cruz, um, to provide
Yeah. And it'll prove Let's, let's do that. Let's, let's, let's get an opinion from counsel. Uh, I don't think we need a motion for that. Um, I think we just need to get the opinion from counsel, um, on this issue, uh, and let's bring it to our next meeting. Okay. Alright, so for the time being, uh, we'll, we'll, we will just pass on this request until the next meeting. Uh, we'll have, uh, Town Council weigh in on it, uh, some of the concerns that were brought up by Mr. O'Day and by the, uh, by this board. Uh, and then we'll, uh, we'll see what happens at the next meeting. So, um, just, uh, Mr. O'Day, thank you for your, uh, for your letter, uh, for your email, um, and, um, I guess the best thing to say is stay tuned.
Okay, thank you, thanks.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you tonight.
Okay.
Alright, good night.
Good night. Alright, next item on the agenda. Some lady from, some lady just all of a sudden just popped on our screen for some reason, I don't know. Okay, oh, it's Director DePietro from the Council on Aging to give us an update.
Here I am. Good evening, everybody. Um, we are really excited and hope to, um, continue our gradual reopening of the center. Um, currently, we are asking people to call prior, the Friday prior to the week of the class to pre-register. That way, we can still keep account of how many people are actually in the building and taking each classes. Um, we do hope in the, in the next few weeks to be able to increase the number of people who are allowed to attend the classes. We don't have to keep that six-foot, um, social distancing anymore. We, um, are currently holding as many classes as we possibly can outside, but we are able to bring them inside um, during poor weather. In June, we are going to bring our Congregate Meal Site back on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Our transportation will be up and running. We'll be able to transport people to the center if they, um, want to join us for lunch. And, um, we're going to follow the town's um, guidance on whether you see fit for people to, for us to be requiring people to wear masks inside, or do we follow the, um, the governor's mandate where we suggest if you haven't been vaccinated, we ask that you keep your mask on?
Alright, Mr. Talabom?
Hi, hi Amy, nice going, Amy. Um, it, it is, the confusion brought on by the CDC and the state, um, and now even our town in terms of how enforced mask is going to be. It's gonna, it's gonna enter every building and every establishment in town across the country, and people are gonna have to interpret a lot of things, like if you had a vaccination, how do I know? And do we really have the right to ask? Or, uh, the governor says, we don't, the, the federal government says you don't need it, so please let me in, et cetera, et cetera, across the board. Do you foresee, as things roll forward, and how things are going to change daily, I understand that, uh, a lot of confusion and, um, and even, um, uh, resistance to some of these issues?
Um, so far, we haven't had any resistance whatsoever to the people who have come into the building. The good news is, and to be honest, I'm not sure if this is, um, if the statistics are on, I think they're positive that seventy-five percent of people over the age of seventy in Dartmouth have been vaccinated, and we are updating our software system, so when anybody comes into the center where we're re-screening and asking for name, address, emergency contact, and we do ask if they've been vaccinated, they don't have to answer. It's more for our, um, for our records at the end of the year, so we can, we can, um, get some numbers. And I would say, you know, ninety-five percent of the people who are coming into the classes do have the vaccine now. Um, but aside from that, no, we don't normally see the, um, the angry side of, of, of people. I think, um, you know, our participants are happy to be, to be out and about, and um, so I, I think whatever mandate we set in place, at least for the next few weeks, uh, people won't have a problem abiding by it.
Excellent.
Uh, anybody else?
Great job, Amy.
Thank you.
Alright, terrific, good news. Slowly opening up here. Alright, thank you, Amy, appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Next item on the agenda, another sign of opening up, Memorial Day Parade update. Veteran Service Officer, Matthew Brule.
Good evening, gentlemen. How are we doing tonight?
Good, how you doing?
So, I'm doing well, thank you. Uh, so, uh, with Memorial Day closing in and restrictions lifting, um, I've been planning, uh, for a Memorial Day Parade, and I just kinda wanted to touch base with you and, and make sure we had your final approval, and cordially invite you to participate um, as we, uh, as we honor Dartmouth's fallen.
Yeah, terrific. That's good, good news. Um, that's for sure. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of people very excited about this. That's for sure. So, I haven't had a parade through this town. Mr. Mickelson?
Matthew, congratulations on all your hard work.
Thank you, sir.
Want to ask you, um, I'm looking at some weather issues possibly. I think we should, should understand what we will do. I know what we, I know what you want to do, and we've done it in the past, so. Um, maybe you want to just tell the rest of the board members what, what we usually do.
Right, we'll be meeting, uh, tomorrow night to go through any last minute kind of things, and, uh, I'm sure that will come up. Um, and we will have an alternative plan in place. But we will be, uh, in some shape or form on Memorial Day honoring Dartmouth's fallen, whether that be with the parade, or if it's uh, foul weather with just a service, I think they would have it at the cemetery, but that would be, you know, information to come out after.
Right, which we've done in the past.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at about a thirty percent chance.
Yeah, I just want to
Long range.
Cover the bases, you know.
Okay.
I know a lot of the participants are, uh, you know, are raring to get out there, and, and some, uh, and some rain won't, won't stop them.
I don't think so.
Mr. Talabom?
Yes, hey man, nice going.
Thank you, sir.
Do you, the, 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 uh, numbers of people participating in the parade, can you compare it to what you expect? It might be compared to what's been in the past to give people an idea?
Um, we've had, we're having some, uh, organizations join us this year, uh, that haven't. Mind you, I've only had one other parade. Um, so, uh, we do have some units coming in from, uh, outside, um, from New Bedford. We have the, the, the young, uh, young Marines are coming in and participating. Typically, they, uh, they'll stay in New Bedford, but they'll be having, uh, a group of about twenty-five, uh, Marines coming in, so that'll be good. Um, and overall, I think a lot of folks are just really looking forward to getting out there, so even the Dartmouth local groups that maybe uh, someone may have, you know, not marched in the parade, that's a member of the VFW now, you know, feels compelled to just because for so long, you know, we haven't been able to get out there, so.
About the, uh, the bands, the musical bands and kids, you gotta fix them?
Yes, sir. So I've been in, uh, touch with Ian Flint, the band director. Um, we had originally gone with the, uh, just the high school band, um, and he touched base with me about incorporating the seventh and eighth graders as well. Um, we decided that that was, uh, safe. I've been working with Sergeant Jovia, the Dartmouth Police Department, making sure everything, uh, is gonna work out. He's been in touch with DPW. Um, and as far as that goes with the numbers, I'm limiting, um, numbers of, of participants as far as, you know, if we had put both bands together, that would be about a hundred and eighty kids trying to get them into the cemetery, um, and then get back out and things like that. Maybe we would have gotten a little hectic, and then the numbers itself, uh, will have the public in the cemetery, as that's the largest, um, event, so. The seventh and eighth graders will, uh, won't be coming into the cemetery. They'll be continuing on to the second entrance, and then we'll all be filing out, and they'll be joining up afterwards.
Great. Got a lot of people coming and participating. Fantastic. Beautiful. Thank you.
Looking so far, it seems like it's a go. Good.
Great, great.
Anything else from the members of the board?
Yeah, marching this parade.
If, uh, if you're interested in marching, uh, we will be, uh, forming up, rallying up at, uh, um, eight-thirty, uh, down upon Gansett and stepping off at nine, nine o'clock.
Okay, I will try to be there. I can't walk because I have a half a knee problem, believe it or not.
Uh, there'll, there'll be some antique cars.
I'll have a, I'll have a convertible and, uh, anybody who needs to ride with me, I think Frank, if you're interested. Or if there's a veteran who wants to come in, I'll be more than happy to take a vet with me.
That's very generous of you. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Bring a, bring a helmet.
Only next to you, Stan. Alright, we'll just keep Stanley walking in front of us, so that way, anything happens with Stan, it'll give you a totally avoided.
Give you a bullseye.
Yep. Alright, well, thank you very much, Matt. We appreciate it, and we look
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your time.
Good luck.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
You too, now.
Thank you.
Alright, next item on the agenda. This is initiated by the Chair. June COVID Remembrance Month. This is something that has been done uh, throughout the nation here and there. And one of the things that I was curious about, um, and it didn't seem to be reported, was the number of our fellows townspeople who have succumbed to this, uh, this virus during the pandemic. Numbers were kept, uh, up to a certain point, and then when the state started taking over, uh, we lost, um, I guess the numbers were not, uh, uh, we lost, um, I guess the numbers were not, uh, kept on a, on a weekly basis. However, at the time, there were over fifty people in town um, who had succumbed to this and this was almost to the point where this was, uh, I believe sometime in the fall. Uh, so since then, that number I'm sure has grown. Um, since this time, um, there've been over seventeen thousand five hundred, uh, fellow citizens of Massachusetts who have passed away from, uh, COVID. One of the things I wanted to do was to, um, honor our fellow citizens from town. Uh, each day, a person, uh, has passed away to keep the town flag lowered at half staff, just the town flag, not the United States flag, the town flag. That's within our jurisdiction. Uh, lowered in memory of each, uh, member. But because the number was greater than, um, I didn't want this to go over two months. So I had, uh, initially taken a look at a month where we can remember, um, our fellow citizens, um, and honor them. Uh, June was, uh, an appropriate month. So what I have come up with is this proclamation. And it's called the COVID nineteenth month of remembrance, June of twenty twenty-one, whereas more than five hundred and eighty thousand Americans, including more than seventeen thousand five hundred Massachusettans, which include fellow citizens of Dartmouth, have lost their lives due to a virus that has spread throughout the world, creating a global pandemic and having catastrophic effects on human life in our community. And whereas each life lost to COVID nineteen leaves behind loved ones and countless unfinished dreams, taking a devastating toll on our nation, state and community. We will never forget those whom we have lost and whereas we as a strong and determined nation continued, continue working to eradicate this pandemic, it is important to set aside time to reflect on this devastation COVID nineteen and has caused globally and locally while leaving no community untouched. And whereas the people of the town of Dartmouth join in honoring the memory of those whose lives were lost to COVID nineteen and express our sympathy and support to those suffering from this worldwide pandemic. Now, therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Dartmouth, do hereby proclaim the entire month of June twenty twenty-one as COVID nineteen month of remembrance in Dartmouth and do commend this solemn observance to all our citizens in town who were lost to COVID nineteen and to the victims globally and hereby order that all town flags be lowered at, I should say, at, um, and flown at half staff. I, I I leave this to us to decide. I, I think it's something that we should do. Um, we're clearly coming out of this slowly. Things are starting to open up. Uh, people have their cabin fever is starting to subside on a lot of people. Uh, just this weekend, um, Round Hill was packed to the gills. Uh, parking was there was no parking around noon time on Sunday. Um, now, you know, and there were plenty of people on the beach and, and people are starting to come out, but I think we need to, um, pause and, and reflect on, um, neighbors and loved ones and, and people in our community. So I, I urge, um, I urge the board to, uh, to pass, to pass on, to pass this, please. Mr. Talabon?
Chairman, uh, beautiful written, well thought out and includes some, uh, really valuable thoughts. Uh, my, my only addition would be that I think it's really important that we do our very, very best to, uh, to broadcast and announce and let people know what's going on so that they see flag at half staff and wonder why and whatever we can do to make sure that we promote the, uh, the idea that we get it out, get the word out.
Well, I think if, if this does pass, then it will be reflected on the town webpage. Um, and, um, I, it will be reported on social media, that's for sure.
And, uh, local newspapers as well.
Yeah. Mr. Gracie?
Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea. I support it and I thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you. Do I, uh, Mr. Mickelson?
Yeah, I have a motion to approve this. Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Harren. All right, on the motion, any questions? Mr. Talabon?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Harren?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Gladly, yes.
And the chair will vote in favor, yes, and thanks the board for their support. So Sean, we can get this on, uh, get this on the website and get it out to the, uh, the local media.
We will do that.
And please, and please notify, um, all departments that have town flags, um, that as of, uh, Tuesday, June first, a day after Memorial Day, that all flags and all town flags, uh, in town will be at half staff, uh, through June thirtieth.
Do we have to sign this?
Um, no, I don't think so. I think our vote was, is good for it.
I assume the digital side is not going to be running? No, not, no.
Not yet, no.
Be perfect for it.
Like, we got a sandwich board signed for you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have Stanley stand out there along with a thirty percent off discount.
Menagees hot dogs.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the artist donation of an exterior mural. This is also something from me. Um, I came into town hall, oh God, maybe last, sometime in the fall. And one of the things that just struck me as I walked in the back down to the first level is just how boring and blah those walls are when you enter to get to the elevator. So I had contacted a, um, an acquaintance of mine, Tom Bobowicki. Those of you who have been in town long enough know that his dad, uh, was Michael Bobowicki, uh, used to teach at the high school and was the baseball coach for many, many years. And his mom, uh, was a elementary school teacher. Tom, Tom Bobowicki, or Tom Bob, as he's, uh, artistically known, is, uh, he's got a unique slant on things. And I asked him to take a look at, um, the walls and one of the things he said was that there wasn't anything on those walls that could he could work with. He could strike himself up. So he took a look, he took a tour around the building and he did come up with something. And I like the idea. Years, a few years ago, if you remember, the park board had Tom Bobowicki do something at the Round Hill Bath House. It made the bath house look like, um, an alien invasion. I think this is something that initially, when I first saw it, I says, ooh, wrong place, but now he explained as to where it is and I said, yes, it's a good idea. Sean, do you have those pictures? If not, I have them on mine. I can share with the, uh,
Yeah, I don't have them on
Okay.
this laptop.
All right, I need to have, um, screen sharing, uh, enabled for me.
We have them in the agenda.
No, no, you don't have what, um,
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yeah, all right, let me see, um. Okay, let me move you. All right. This is a globe of one of the rear entry doors. And this is something that Tom Bobowicki does. He took this item and said, what can I do with it? And I don't, and I should be able to. Yes, I should. And this is what he came up with. Little girl blowing a bubble. This is not the front of the building. This is the back of the building. Uh, this is something that everybody would see when they come to the building. It's, um, quirky. It's lighthearted. And it's kind of fun. And it's something that, um, we need, to be honest with you. Um, the only change I would suggest Tom do is that make, um, her dress green. But I, I'm, because the Select Board is the custodian of town buildings in town, we would need permission for him to do this. Um, I'm not saying how long it would be up there, but it would be up there for a while. Uh, he is, he is a home ground artist. He is, um, this is a local guy willing to, um, um, to do this. Um, and it's something I think, um, you know, it's something I would like to see. And I don't know how, how you guys would react to this. I know the packet, um, had given you some, some of the things that he's done. Um, you can go on Instagram and, um, look up Tom Bob. Uh, he's done some great stu- he's done some really good stuff. John, I don't know if you're familiar with, um, I believe he's done something down on the waterfront where you have those, uh, water meters, I mean, gas meters. And he turned it into a bunch of crabs and have him Popeye, uh, drag those crabs away. So it kind of give the nautical thing. Um, and he's done some, he's done some pretty interesting stuff. And I was just curious how the board would feel about him uh, doing this work, uh, in the back of the building. It may be one or maybe two to kind of set off, um, a his and hers type of thing on, on the, uh, backside of the building. Mr. Mickelson?
I think it's a great idea, but you know, um, it seems to me that there'll be some pushback. Um, but, um, how easily, easily, uh, would it be to take these, uh, take the murals down?
Very easy. Very easy. And, and that my initial concern is when I saw the globe was the front of the building. And I said, I don't know about the front of the building, but this is the back of the building. The back of the building, to be honest with you, is, it's, it's it's just yeah, it's, it's a brick. You know, I, I asked him to take a look at the, the main entrance in the back to see if there's something that could be done there. But this is a good start. Uh, and I think, uh, I, maybe he can do a his and her thing. You know, and for the kids, um, you know. And it shows, you know, I'm, it, it, you know.
Let's see what happens.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it, it's a quirky thing, you know, and the town has its quirks. Um, David, then Frank?
Uh, I would, uh, I, I love the idea of something fun, uh, fun and fancy, uh, a bit, I had a bit of experience sort of with this and I'm wondering, because it's in the back of the building as well, what it may do to, uh, to, shall we say, promote, uh, additional painting that there would be, uh, unwanted uh, in the dark of the night and, uh, start a progression of things you don't really want to see.
Well, I'm surprised it hasn't happened yet. Um.
Well, this may, uh, could be a spot to start it.
Well, I think if, I think if we, you know, we let it known that it's something that we authorized and, and you know, we, you know, they went through the proper channels, hopefully, you know, um, it won't happen.
We also have security cameras in the, around the entire property, so.
And it's how others feel that we on our own arbitrarily picked one person versus maybe, you know, putting it out for other people to I, I don't, I don't like to throw water, throw, uh, water on this thing, but I, are other people gonna be concerned they weren't even, uh, included and could have been and be somewhat resentful?
Well, and I'm, I'm not looking to, you know, I, I don't want, believe me, I don't want to start a cultural war. You know, but I think, I think the idea is, is he's already done something in town. Um, and this is kind of a quirky thing, you know, where you take an, an everyday object and turn it into something else. You know?
I think it's und- tendentially creative and I think it adds something to, uh, something that's not there, especially something that's old and beat up. He turns it into something really nice, but uh, I, I'm, I do have a concern about promoting it in a way that's not healthy and also uh, we're, we're not being exactly, um, open as to who can do it and why, why we chose him v- versus somebody else.
Well, I mean, let's put it this way, he volunteered. I haven't seen anybody step, come forward. So Frank?
Okay. Yeah, I, I think the man is obviously very talented and I see nothing wrong with putting some of them. I might put a smile on somebody's face for a while.
So what would the, John?
Maybe you'd, uh, alleviate some of those fears if there was a timeline with the, uh, duration of the artwork.
We can keep it up for six months if you want. We can keep it up, uh, a year, you know? Well, however, that, that's up to us. You know, we're the custodians of the building. At some point in time, we can decide when it's time for them to come, time for it to come down.
Well, at some, it's, at some point, uh, we're, we, um, we'll, we'll not even see it anymore. You know, because you're so used to it.
Right, exactly. You know, and, and it's still, it's still, I'm still looking trying to figure out how to take care of those two giant walls as you walk in too. So how much, you know, it's this, that's just absolutely, it just grinds my gourd every time I walk in the building. It's just
I, I would agree with Mr. Harren that we should put a timeline to evaluate it. And I think six months is long enough and uh, we could do more or less to change it and
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you decide to do it, you can put the timeframe in, you know, to, to review, um, if you want to take a look at it after X period of time. Um, and that'll be part of it. And I'm sure he'll understand because I, I guarantee you that, you know, some of the work that he does, um, you know, does have a tendency to disappear, especially, you know, uh, when he's done it in, uh, LA and, and New York City and whatnot, so. So if, if you want, if you want to do this, we can, um, approve it and put a timeframe on it. I, I have no issue, I have no problem with that.
Motion to approve for six months.
Okay, great. Appreciate that. Any questions on the motion? On the motion, Mr. Talabon?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Harren?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Mick, uh, yeah, Mick, duh. She's starting to talk like a third party. And the chair votes in favor. I appreciate that. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate that. All right, let's see. And that concludes our new business. Old business, um, COVID. The only thing I see COVID is the town is no longer going to be reporting the numbers that it's going to uh, acquiesce to the state. According to, uh, email received from Mr. Michaud.
Yes.
Okay.
One other, one other item to note that, um, with the emergency order ending, um, the state, the ABCC, uh, in line with some of the, uh, the alcohol licensing, I'll just read it, um, the state of emergency will end on June fifteenth, the governor's state of emergency. Um, there, it, it changes to patio and outdoor expansions. Licenses have been approved for expanded patio and outdoor service pursuant to the governor's executive orders. They may continue their outdoor operations for sixty days after the end of the state of emergency, which would end, so that would be Sunday, August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. The governor and legislature are working on legislation to extend this deadline. However, no extension has yet been approved. Licenses that seek to continue patio outdoor service after August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one are encouraged to apply in the ordinary course for an alteration of premises with their local licensing authorities. Additionally, takeaway and delivery of alcohol, establishments licensed for on-premise consumption of alcohol must end takeaway and delivery sales of alcohol on June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. To make that note.
All right, so we just, um, I'm sure, um, everybody's aware of that, but if we haven't sent it out to all the licensees, let's send it out.
We will. I think that, that comes straight from the ABCC, but we'll send it as well.
Okay. Yeah. Nothing wrong with doubling down.
Right. Is it chairman?
Mr. Talabon?
I, I, I've got a particular concern that, uh, as we go forward, uh, with these interpretations coming from different entities, be it the CDC, be it the state, be it the ABCC, that we, as a local town, we have to review this on a regular basis to see how things are going and the acceptance in town. And if there's any resistance or issue, we should be very careful over.
Right, I don't, I'm, as far as I think the only thing that we have to do as a board is if we still want to require masks coming into town hall, that's up to us. Um, as far as the businesses goes, that's up to them. Uh, it's already been reported that some of the big box stores are not going to, uh, not going to require masks, uh, for those who are vaccinated. My, my question is, is how do you determine who's been vaccinated? You know, nobody walks around with a V on their head. You know, or wears a V on their shoulder to say I've been vaccinated. So I, that's, that's gonna be the difficult, that's the most difficult thing to enforce. Um, but that's up to them. My, my understanding, Walmart, Home Depot, Target, um, some other of the big box stores are, are, are going that way. Um, but in the meantime, uh, you know, I would, uh, acquiesce to, uh, the Board of Health, um, on, uh, public buildings in town. Um, I, and I think that's something that, uh, um, you know, we can, uh, support if, if it comes down the pike, so.
All right, I just think over initially, especially the first month or so, that, uh, the Board of Health and the Director would be a great, uh, a source of information to evaluate how things are going in town in general, be it public buildings or whatever. source of information to evaluate how things are going in town in general, be it public buildings or whatever.
Yep.
I think we should hear from him uh frequently in the, certainly in the beginning.
Okay. Well, we can get updates on that, so.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Gracie?
Yeah, I ju- I just, a lot of people I'm sure know, but I'm sure we should announce it just in case that the town is back in the green. Uh there are only two, two communities that are still in the red and that's the Bedford and Lawrence. Uh so I think collectively, uh as a town, we've done very well with what we did and including the participants and the residents who have done their part also. So I think it's good, really good news.
Yeah, the town gets, the town, the town will get the credit, but it's due to the it's due to the support and the effort of, of its residents and uh, and people who work in town, that's for sure.
Yeah.
All right, uh any updates on the Bliss Corner?
Um no new updates. Um heard uh DEP's previous notice of responsibility. We replied back to DEP with some meeting dates uh to discuss response actions. We have not heard back from DEP though.
Not surprising. Uh Lake Milk joke?
Uh no new updates.
Okay. Uh we have no minutes. Any information? Any board member have any information? None?
Want to remind everybody, go out to the parade, look forward to it. Look up to see both sides of the street jammed with people.
Damn. Still safely distancing. Because it's still in effect.
I am kickoff.
All right. With that, any, if anybody has anything else and they have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Haron. On the motion, any questions? Being none. Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Haron?
Yes.
The Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Good night, everybody.
Nice job.